We're going to go ahead and open the question session on City Commission for November 17th, 2010. Mayor Ellis is in traffic that's barely moving. Commissioner West is not able to be here and Commissioner will see that at least coming a little later. But this is a work session, we don't have to have a quorum, so we can go ahead and proceed, which I guess I can start. I've convened it, I guess I'm going to get to ask for their own future agenda items on the work session. For a work session. Here we've got. The one discussion item here we have is the question of the purchase of Eastham School for the Oregon City Library. And I presume the report's going to be coming from Maureen Cole.
That would be correct. Honorable Commissioners. So previously on this topic, we've had two executive sessions, and last week we had a work session about the findings of the due diligence inspections. During those meetings, I recommended that we discontinue the purchase of Eastham because of the findings of the due diligence report. So tonight we have the opportunity to discuss this a bit more, to hear from more people and to ask more questions. As you know, the library's been looking for a home for many, many years, you know that very well. Since before leaving the Carnegie in 1995, our library and library supporters have gone through many, many iterations of looking at locations, going out for bonds, getting their hopes up only to have them dashed again. We were all hoping that Eastham was the answer to our prayers, but we've learned that it comes with a very high price tag. It was saying that we are in a situation of here we go again. But what makes this time different is that because of the library district, we now have a guaranteed funding source. We are still wrapping our heads around what this really means to have dedicated funds. This funding does create opportunities that were not available in the past, such as the ability to borrow. If the school district is willing to lend us money, then perhaps there are other entities who would be willing to lend us money. I just want to throw that out there because this does make this situation different than all the previous ones. The due diligence period ends this Friday, two days from now. Later tonight, I will be asking you to make an affirmative decision about whether to proceed with the purchase of Eastham or not. But right now, I'm available to answer any further questions, and I believe that the library board would like to address it as well.
I guess I'll start, I think we'll take comments from anybody that wishes to speak, but we will start with the representative library board. And just to make certain, you're actually representing the board here, not yourself?
I am the vice chair of the library board at the moment, Harriet Shul, vice chair of the library board since you can't get a hold of the chair by phone, so I guess I'm it.
Yeah, the question is you are, in fact, you're speaking, you're representing the board as well.
I represent the board. At our board meeting last Wednesday, yeah, it was last Wednesday. We discussed, we didn't come to cheer or do anything, but we were a bit frustrated with the whole process. But we voted to support Mo's recommendation that we not pursue the purchase of Eastham School, mostly because of the fiscal issues that are arising, the increased costs. If some major miracle would happen and the school district would decide to give it to us for half price or something, that might be different. We could not see any reason in pursuing at the cost that it currently represents and the increased cost pursuing it. However, we then had another discussion where we wanted to share an opinion with you, but we didn't have it solidified, and that was in effect, let's do something this time. Let's actually be active and study and look at different sites. Not this, maybe the old city hall site, but look at all sites possible, perhaps in the inventory, and actively pursue it in the next number of months so we could get started on the process of finding either an existing building or probably having to build on some land. And it would be very nice if we could find some that was owned by either the city or the county that we could talk the county out of, or we could utilize some of the city. And one of the things that many of us don't really know is set properties about, does the city actually own? And are any of them feasible for a library site? And that would probably be one of the first steps.
Anything? Also, in the discussion that we have with the library board, we talked about having some public process. So not just having, we have a consultant do a complete inventory and a naked recommendation, but you know, trying to have a public process. And we probably also need to do some programming, a bit of a needs assessment, a little bit more formal than we've already, than we did this last year. So that people who've been comment during the public process are responding to some specific criteria that we're looking for. So we try to do that, plus the inventory with specific criteria, so that we could really like make an informed and thorough decision and then proceed. So I think a public, some public input and process would be a really good thing to do.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Karen Maury, I live outside the city of Oregon City, I am on the library board and a member of the Friends, but I'm speaking for me. Sitting through these discussions has just made me really, really happy that I'm not you guys. This is the first time in 15 years that we've had something in hand that we can afford. But listening to Mo, talking to other people, it's a large building that's going to require maintenance. There'll be unused space that's going to require heating, light, no guarantee that the vacant space can be rented out. And as hard as it was for me to be part of the unanimous vote of the library board to agree that we let Eastham go, I do have to face the fact, it is not a responsible use of public dollars to continue the purchase of Eastham. And I don't know about the comment about no tears because I just about had them. But I agree that we've done nothing for 15 years, this is the closest we've gotten. We don't have another 15 years, so this, when you're working on your goals for next year, and I agree with Rocky, we have a facility problem in the city, the library is not a standalone problem. But the facility problem has got to seriously be addressed by the new commission.
Anybody else wish to speak on this?
Thank you. I'm tired, I'm a little late. It's raining out there. I don't know if this was discussed before I came in, but I wanted to kind of give my head around a few things. Mo, I've got a couple of questions for you. Remind me, I just want to talk some numbers here. Square footage of that Hilltop was how much?
Hilltop was 13,000.
13,000, and ideally we'd like how many square feet?
The OLA standards recommend 43,000 square feet.
Okay. How much is Carnegie right now?
It's between five and six. I can never quite remember, it's small.
Okay. If we found something that didn't quite meet the OLA standard, how much, how much, how many square feet would work for our library?
Well, let me put it to you this way. Right now, if we had a new, modern, really functional building that was 20,000 square feet that we could add on to somewhere down the road, I think we'd all be supremely happy. The concept being though that, you know, that second phase has always been problematic to think about, you know, because it probably would require a bond or something like that. The OLA standards are something to strive for, they're not necessarily something that you can always achieve. I think if we could get close to 30,000 square feet, I would adore a 30,000 square foot library. When you think of how big 43,000 square feet is, that's quite a bit of space to staff. And the funding that I have right now, I'm never actually going to be able to meet the OLA standard for staffing, which is 19 FTE. And that would go a long ways towards staffing a 43,000 square foot building. So, you know, I mean, I think we need to like pull that back a little bit and think about, well, what does the funding that I have, what could it really staff, you know? And how can we staff something smartly? But if we had like a 30,000 square foot, brand new, beautiful building in Oregon City, we would be so happy, we would be crying tears of joy, wouldn't we? Yeah.
So, but if we also, if we purchased something and added on to it to make 30, that would, that would work too?
It might, depending on what you're, yeah.
Okay. The other thing I had to ask, I wanted to ask about was, as far as numbers, is this. Could you reflect my memory on the levy that was passed last year or the year before? That gave us the funding to start this search for a library site? How is it structured, what does it provide generally as far as operations go and the ability to purchase a library and the ability to, if at all, construct something new or add in addition, those three issues?
The levy is structured so that for all the taxpayers who pay into it, it's 39 cents per thousand dollars, a whole cent value we receive. And then there are like 11 libraries in that district, and it's all broken into kind of areas and sections. And we have, actually Oregon City has one of the biggest sections, which is why we would need to have one of the bigger libraries. So within our area, we serve like 58,000 people, and it's about split, half and half for in Oregon City and half outside and unincorporated area. And so, so we get from that about 1.7 million dollars a year from that. And then the city contributes about $200,000 specifically for capital improvements. And so of that, I can spend on where it needs to go.
So as a hypothetical matter, depending how we broke down our funding, you're saying generally 1.7 million a year from the levy. So how much of that 1.7 million would be necessary for operations and staffing?
Um, well, you know, a lot of it. I've been thinking at it recently about like how much could I put towards operations and like debt? And as I was looking at the Eastham deal, I was thinking, well, it's going to take about 500, $525,000 a year just for that part of it. Maintenance, operations of the building and the debt payment.
So that'd be about half of it?
That'd be about, no, that'd be about a quarter of.
Quarter of that?
Yeah, a quarter of what the income that I have. So staff comes to be very close to half of the entire amount. And it's, in the library world, people like to kind of keep the percentage of figure of 10% in their minds for materials. They can't always purchase that much. I remember when I was at Eugene Public Library, we always purchased 10% every year, and then the last few years I was there, they had to drop it back to like 8%. But that's kind of like one of those figures that you strive for, you know, just to kind of have out there. So you want, so if you have like 50% going towards staffing, and that's actually on the low side, compared to some of my colleagues spend more than that, and then 10%, so you're up to 60%. So, plus 25% going to your building fund. So what am I up to? 85%?
Okay.
Yeah.
So would there be the possibility if the city were to find, if we got fortunate, we found a piece of vacant property cheap? Like the county had something available, or we found in our inventory something that the city owned that was available? Or we found an existing building that was also inexpensive? Would there be the possibility of using that 1.7 million annually to service debt on a bond for constructing something new or constructing in addition?
It's my understanding that we could, we just use that portion of it that we could afford.
Okay.
Which let's say that's the $500,000.
Right.
So it's my understanding that we could use that and that that amount of money would at 4% interest provide us with about $7 million.
Okay.
That's just a preliminary look, see, that's what we came up with.
Okay.
What's the loan interest rate?
Yeah.
So then it seems to me that depending on what kind of luck we have in site purchase and acquisition, to an extent, I mean, at least as a theoretical or hypothetical matter, we could do something as far as new construction or in addition without going out for a general obligation bond.
That's what I'm thinking too.
We anticipated your question and your analysis, so we have done some preliminary numbers back a week ago, I think. Commissioner, one of our commissioners, Lex, asked that question of me, I believe a couple weeks ago. So we, we wanted you, the commission, to know that in the community, I heard from a couple of board members who repeated that tonight. We waited 15 years and we're so close and, and you know, I'm new and I'm sitting here saying, they're saying, how's this going to be different this time? And the reason I think it's going to be different this time is we have dedicated funds available. We don't have a massive surplus. We may end up with a 20,000 square foot facility that's modular in construction that can be added on to later as the needs grow. But 20,000 designed properly is so much different than where we are now in our temporary facility and where we were before on Hilltop, that it's going to be a drastic improvement. And that's why I'm fairly comfortable saying, assuming the commission's support for the project continues as it has, I don't see any reason why we cannot solve this problem without waiting, I mean, any unnecessary time. And after your decision tonight, in fact, I don't really want to wait till the retreat, although we will be bringing back to you updates at the retreat about where we're going. But we would like to just hit the ground running and start looking, start that process, have Mo set up the process with the consultant to bring in that public participation component, and start working now on identifying sites so that we don't lose a single day time.
You're doing great.
Yeah, that's, well, first holidays, we're going to do about that. But essentially, we're, we're ready to look for alternatives and make something happen for our community.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner West had submitted some comments when I was sitting at the mayor's seat that she wanted to read into the board, so I'll make sure that those got read.
I'll hold them in advance, it's kind of a mid-conduit of my own. I almost think you cannot go after a bond, because we have no bonding authority outside our city limits. If we went after a bond from the city residents, and the city residents knew that 50% of the users would not be paying into that, I think the bond would fail on the city. And I'm glad to hear that you think we can do it without going out for a bond, because frankly, and there's also the fact that the city, that the whole, I should say, the whole county stepped forward, where they, two thirds or more vote in favor of the forming the district to begin with. That was in lessening times, and now it'd be harder to do it, and people would say, well, gee, I just voted for libraries not too long ago. And so I think there's, I think it'd be, I agree with you, I think it'd be very problematic to go for a bond.
Yeah, and if I may, in addition to that, looking at the other facilities on the horizon, especially Police Station, which I think we are kind of looking at a bond for, if we didn't have to go out for a bond to the library, I think that would kind of bolster our feasibility and opportunity to do that for the Police Station.
Well, Mo, that's fine, I was just going to say that, I mean, I'll make the same simply because it's true that, and it probably was 12 years ago or so, there was a master plan for the county's red soils area, and that master plan actually included the inclusion of a library. And perhaps, perhaps we can convince our colleagues on the planning commission that it's in their interest as well, being a county seat and being very central here, and since we are the biggest district to give the services that we need to render, and perhaps they can find a way to contribute some land. Because I was supporting the Eastham thing because we had an emergency situation. But this is not central to the district at all. And I should say, Eastham isn't. And in fact, anything this way wouldn't be. And that general area is far closer being a central location. I shouldn't say central necessarily, but it's on Beaver Creek, it's not that far from 217, it's, so it's quite, I do that all the time. 217. No, that isn't. It's very sensible to 217. It's perfectly sensible, 217. So I'm going to go ahead and read Commissioner West's comments in here. It says, "Nancy, in my absence at the city commission, I would like to pass on the following comments to be entered into the record. Last spring, in a situation of duress from a short timeline set by the redevelopment of the Danielson Properties, I supported to purchase Eastham School for a permanent library. Some of the features that were attractive to me in making that decision were payments that could be scheduled out of existing revenues versus going to the bonus for a bond measure, the potential of saving a beloved local neighborhood landmark, the potentials of doing something artistically and architecturally interesting with an old school that would reflect life as it served in Oregon City, and lastly, the fact that I thought it could serve as a jumpstart to economic revitalization in the southwest end of the Maguahean neighborhood. After six months of due diligence for the school district and with the information we have now learned, I feel that the stamp has tipped in a different direction. Our reasons listed above are now outweighed by the increased cost to refurbish the building to our community's library needs. At this time of a state and local wide economic slowdown, I would prefer to settle in for a while at the Carnegie, save some money and reconsider our options for a library property and a bond in the future. Current estimates would suggest that we could build a 35,000 square foot library for 12 to 13 million, significantly less than the current estimates for Eastham, that include a 4.1 million purchase price, 2.9 million to remodel, and another 10 to 12 million more for a bond, plus money to redo the egress and ingress on Malala and Route Valley on 7th Street. Now, this news could be seen as disappointing in the long term. I think our community would be best served by a building that would, that would be built to work as a high-performance standard library and not as a school retrofitted to marginally function as a library, but in the end would cost our community four to five million dollars more. Thank you, Daphne West, City Commissioner. I guess it's a case of having an albatross in hand and having unknown birds in the bush. And I will be making a decision later on. I'm sorry that there was a turn on events, but I think in terms of long-term solution, in terms of serving the whole district, I think a different location would be the most suitable, and now we can go ahead and look in that direction. And I'm glad you feel we can do that without going out for a bond.
We'll also be trying to leverage the dollars we have available. We'll be looking at grant sources and every other place we can look to make sure that we make the most of the money we do have.
I think the monies we did mention, and one we left off that I think most of us know about is one billion that the county's committed to two predatory capital improvements or capital development.
Okay.
Are there any other comments? Does anybody else want to say anything concerning the library and how we move forward? Come ahead.
Lady Ben Hafferby, president of the Friends of the Oregon City Public Library and also on the library board because of that position, but I've been on the board on my own for seven years before that. Well, there's two things to think about too, is that the Friends have $73,000 in their building, and it's worth a library. And so we want to use that in some way, but we're thinking on more collection, but still somehow we want to be contributing to that. And then also, some of the same people that have been on the board, the library board itself, and in the Friends of the Library, have formed a foundation, the Oregon City Public Library Foundation. And because we don't have a piece of ground or a drawing, we've been going very slowly, though we are incorporated in the state of Oregon. And we're committed to raising funds. A year ago, I was at a college reunion and said to my friends, I need to raise $2 million in two years. And I think if we could raise $2 million, it would go a long way to, I'm sure the economy would improve so that it could happen and that we wouldn't have to go out for a bond. I worked very hard a few years ago, helping the firefighters come in so that we could clear up that financial issue for the city. My husband and I went door to door on that campaign. I was the liaison between the county and did a lot of campaigning in Oregon City two years ago for the library district itself. And so there's a lot been going on, and we've been jumping at the bit and we want to get going. So I just want to let you know it's been going on in the background pretty quietly, but it's been going on, so.
It is some of the easiest money to raise, I apologize. My plane just got in on time at the ITO5, was not cooperating, so apologize for being late. The good news is that even during these times, our campaigns have been terrific, with the children's center, for instance. And they hit their goal. I can name several others in the Portland region that have hit their goal. So people's, it's easier always, raise life for capital than it is for operations. So we have operating funds, we do. And so that, I think, is a package that can be tied up rather neatly. Thank you, I'm sure the testimony I missed was awesome. Is there more, are we doing public comment?
Somebody else we've come forward, we were having public comment, yes.
Okay.
And we have, and a work session, public comment, yes.
Okay. And the purpose of the work session is, where are we trying to get to tonight?
Well, we've gotten the information in terms of what the issues are in terms of the cost of the Eastham site. We've gotten indications from our city manager that we probably could, especially if we found free land, that we might be able to build a library without going out for a bond. And the library board, although it was a difficult vote, voted unanimously to look for another site. I think that's a pretty good summary of what we've had.
So the purpose of this work session, that is to get to where?
Well, probably to get a point that we can have a vote later on.
So what information should we need further than this?
I guess, you know, so much, there's so many things to be explored in terms of property, we're not even in a position to come to anybody.
I don't think so, right?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have anything, I mean, we don't have any, we don't have any information other than we might be able to do this without going out for a bond.
Mr., if I might, please.
Without a different council or commission direction, assuming you exit from here and then make the decision later tonight not to proceed with the purchase, what staff will do is still acting on your existing goals. We will hit the ground tomorrow and engage our consultant and start a process that we will then bring back to you and inform you, we've got this process set up on how to locate a site, we're going to start these discussions. So that's, we're going to be working on this unless the commission directs us to stop, because it's in your goals. And if Eastham didn't work, then automatically we're going to go back to, we're like that little bunny, you know, we just keep, until you tell us to stop. So we're going to do that. I want to be clear about that so that, so that you wouldn't think they had to wait till the retreat or something to give us additional direction. We're working on that for additional direction, but.
Other sites that we've honed in on, so. Part of progress is to rule out options as well. We never lose progress, so we ruled out another option and can go forward. So other information that anybody's put onto the table or need before you're able to make a decision or a community member has something to add?
Well, the importance that actually Reed has put forward in terms of really having a major public process in this decision-making.
That's always important, yeah, absolutely. So with no other business to come before us, then they are good?
Oh, I was just going to ask a question, I think we scheduled an executive session after the commission meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, and we can't do it earlier because of notice.
Okay.
Because unfortunately, when you notice it for eight, we could hold it later, but not earlier. We could hold it later, not earlier, I believe is the rule. So sorry about that. Um,
Mayor, your, uh, your work session tonight addresses goal one, three, four, and maybe more, but at least those three.
Exactly.
I agree with you.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Just ask a general, uh, question about, um, library and future possible sites. And I know one of the, um, and we've, in the past, been checking sites off the list for working or not working. Um, one of the main pieces besides the square footage, et cetera, and all the other things is the weight of the books. And, um, I have no idea what that, what that entails for a, an existing building. Um, how does, is there an easy way to figure that out? There's some calculations to know, okay, what buildings would be?
Oh, um, I've,
I mean, a trinkle weight, it was being guessed at that?
It was on, it's on concrete pad, you're fine.
Right.
You're good. Um, otherwise, you probably have to have, you'd probably have to get a consultant and get an answer. But I think the weight is a hundred pounds per square foot, or it's not more, it's not more. Yeah, it might be a hundred and fifty. So it's in excess of what a lot of things are built to the standard of. So that's the thing, when you look at a regular building, that's more than one floor or, and it's not built on a concrete pad, you know, you have to like really look into all that.
How about, like, reinforced steel construction is actually only considered, yeah, we could, we could put the back on?
I would think so, but I think it depends on how it's built, yeah.
Again, just like this, we often don't know until you do the building, some, or the act weight, um, with all the respect. Anyway, a lot of work to do, and it's exciting work, and it was sort of exciting because when we first came to town, people were saying, well, I don't think we'll have a new, new library in my lifetime. It looked the same. And, um, now that we thought maybe we would, and now that's a new goal.
We'll have one.
We'll have one in my lifetime.
Okay.
How about your, how about, how about the other rock this is lifetime?
I don't know.
Let's do it as well as we can and, uh, as, 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 as the opportunity presents itself.
Well, if you're, we'll see you there.
Very much so. I think that the home in the Carnegie needs to be as short as possible.
It's just the desire of the citizens, I mean, it has been for a long time. Um, I mean, I worked on a, when it was supposed to be the PGE property, I worked on that years ago. And, uh, that didn't work out either, but we'll hit a winner near one of these days, that's for sure. We definitely need a library. Okay, if there's no further.
How did the managers report, you got?
Do you have one for work session?
I already shared what I had, so, I do have several things for the council meeting, but nothing.
Great, and we'll hold them over till then, and we are turned.